Okay, I'd like to call this special meeting to order. I'd like to start with the pledge, I should call at the time, 6:01 is it? 6:01, alright, and I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd ask Councilmember Hilton to lead us in the pledge. We don't have any invocation tonight, so city clerks report on posting the agenda and roll call.
At 8:16 a.m., roll call. Councilmember Almendares?
Here.
Councilmember Blanco?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton?
Here.
Oh, Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Present.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Tovar?
Here.
And Mayor Blanket?
Here, thank you. Alright, we'll start with public comment. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on items not on the agenda but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one public speaker, Joanne Fiero.
Okay, we can go ahead and give that three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I just want a little bit of your time today to voice a concern I have about limiting the amount of public input we're getting at our council meetings. An in-person meeting without any Zoom, without anything, by people. I would really like everyone here to consider how important it is that the council get everyone's opinions, gets their message out to everyone all the time, no matter what. And so therefore, I want to really emphasize the $143,000 we spent for our audiovisual that's still not hooked up, and I please, please ask you to consider hybrid. Use the hybrid feature, don't discount that, please. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And there are no others?
There are no others at this time.
Okay, thank you, so closing public comment, and moving on to item 3.1, interactive discussion regarding roles, responsibilities, and obligations of council members to ensure that the people's business is conducted openly and transparently. I'm going to give the staff report, it's going to be very, very short, it's in the packet, but I'm the one who asked for this meeting to help us as a council be better stewards of the people's business. I hope that we're all looking forward to tonight because it's meant to help us all, and it's funny that four of us, majority of us, are actually still in our first full term, so not on this council for very long, so it's really, we have, we all have a lot to learn. It can be hard and definitely confusing to go from an individual constituent who can speak freely, speak their mind anytime, anyplace, to an elected official bound by the limitations that we're about to discuss. So with that, I'm going to move on to our presentation by City Attorney Andy Faber, and then we'll have public comment after that and council discussion.
Hey, I'm gonna go.
Great, okay.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm just gonna, I'm giving a presentation without slides, just talking, so. And I want to focus on a couple of issues. There are a number of issues that I think the mayor had in her mind in calling this session, some of which we'll be talking about in connection with the norms, because a number of the, I think, proposed changes that Councilmember Leroy Munoz is proposing to the norms address some of the issues that are involved. I want to talk specifically right now about a couple of issues relating to the Brown Act, the Open Government Ordinance, and First Amendment, as they relate to two particular things, and the two particular things are, first, the use of personal devices, you know, smartphones, tablets, things like that, and also use of them during meetings. And secondly, use of social media, which has really become a kind of booming issue everywhere now, and it's gonna, it's gonna attack us in some way or other because it's hitting everybody. So, as pointed out in the staff report, there are several sources of law that are involved. One is the Brown Act, one is our Open Government Ordinance, which in many respects is similar to the Brown Act, although it goes beyond the Brown Act in numerous ways as well. First Amendment's involved, and I'll explain that when we get to social media. And then there are due process issues that the mayor mentioned in the staff report, which relate to the right of an applicant. If an applicant's standing here and has a zoning proposal for you, or something, or conditional use, or something like that, they have the right to have you make a decision based on public input, not based upon private input that nobody else knows about, and that's the basic due process issue. So I want to talk about personal devices first. Generally, personal devices are subject to the Public Records Act. And this is very interesting, the, the leading case on this is a San Jose case that came out three years ago called Smith versus San Jose, or the reported case, it went up to the California Supreme Court under the name San Jose versus Superior Court. And what happened in that case is that Smith, Ted Smith, some of you guys, some of you people may know him, he's a longtime activist. Ted Smith filed a lawsuit, and he wanted to get emails and text messages that council members and the mayor of San Jose had on their phones. And the city said, well, we don't have them. You know, the Public Records Act relates to records in the possession of the city. We don't have his or hers personal devices, we don't control them, we don't keep them, we don't, you know, we don't do anything about them, so they're not public records. They may, they may exist, we're not saying that the mayor or the council members don't have such records, but we don't have them as a city. So, by the time it got to the Supreme Court, Supreme Court said, sorry, we don't care if you don't have them. In theory, you could have them, or you could produce them, and if the rule were that anybody's personal devices were exempt from disclosure, then that would furnish an easy way around the Public Records Act if people wanted to avoid it, simply by doing the public's business on private devices, which the court, of course, felt violated the Public Records Act and violated the Brown Act. So, what the court came up with, it was two things. First of all, there was a rule, and the rule was that email messages, things of that nature, and text messages on your personal devices potentially are public records. That doesn't mean everything on a personal device is a public record, because, of course, we all have personal information too, that's not public record. However, if a request comes in, for example, if we in the city get a request for specific text messages or public records, emails on council members' devices, we have to go through a process now, and the court says that there's no one prescribed process. The court isn't going to say exactly how this has to be done, but what they suggest is that when a city receives such a request, it has to notify, and this would apply to employees of the city too, by the way, not just council members, but notify, let's say, the official, and tell them we've gotten this request, ask the official to conduct a search, and then have the official sign some sort of affidavit, and some cities have fairly complex affidavits, that certifies, sometimes under penalty of perjury, that I have gotten this request, I know what it is, I did the following search, and here's what I found or didn't find, and here are the records I'm turning over or not turning over. One of the things they, the court suggested was that the city should educate the officials about how to do a search. And I think most people, particularly older people, if you said, find your text messages from a year ago, I, I think most of us would have very little idea how to do that. There are some people here who might, and if this matter comes up to Gilroy, presumably our IT people could work with any affected council members and figure out whether, how to do a search, whether you can do a search, and whether the messages are retrievable or not. Interestingly, last week, or maybe two weeks ago, another suit was filed, you may have read about this in the Mercury News. A second suit was filed naming Sam Licardo personally, as well as the city of San Jose, and pointing out, it was, not pointing out, but it was in response, in following on a request, a PRA request that had been made for very specific text messages and personal emails. And according to the suit, Mayor Licardo had told people openly, use my personal Gmail, or I think it was a Gmail account, because I don't like the city's account, it's too slow, or messages don't get to me, or something, so send me text messages and use my personal account. And then, when these requests came in, he didn't give anything up. And the requestor said, wait a minute, I mean, this is really ironic, I mean, he was on the council when this case came down. It's, the case is named after his city, he must know the rule. How can he be telling everybody to use his personal device and then not turning anything over? So many months later, the city did turn over certain texts and email messages. Nonetheless, the lawsuit has just been filed, and the people are going after additional messages, and they were very, and they named very specific messages. For example, there would be, they would have an email which, in which a lobbyist says, well, pursuant to the text messages we exchanged yesterday, here's my proposal, or something like that. So there was a clear implication, a clear pointer to additional messages. And this is going to be a very embarrassing lawsuit if it's pursued, so. I think the moral is, be very careful in the use of personal devices. It's better to have, to not use personal devices for city business, it's better to have a separate city device, or copy things, tell people, use my official email account. It's much cleaner and potentially will keep everybody out of trouble by doing that. So that's personal devices. By the way, if there are any, are there any questions about that? I'm happy to stop and answer questions at any point here, I meant to mention that earlier. Yeah.
So Andy, as I understand it, it doesn't really matter the device, whether it's, you know, city email account, or if I'm checking something on my own phone, and I'm interacting with somebody on my phone here, through my own private Gmail or whatever. Once it's city business, then it's now subject to the PRA, is that correct?
That's, that's a good distillation of the rule from the Smith case, yes.
Okay, so my understanding is correct, that's a good, good start there. What about a situation where somebody emails you a question, or an opinion, or whatever, and they happen to have my personal email address? And they say, hey Peter, take a look at this, and you know, I believe the city should do X, Y, or Z, whatever. What, what in that circumstance, assuming that I do not reply to that email that's sent to my personal email account?
Probably the one way to avoid investigation of your personal account would be for you to forward that to your city account.
Okay.
If you did that, it would be on the city account, and then it would be producible.
Perfect.
Even if you don't reply.
Okay.
And if you're going to reply and enter into a dialogue, it would make sense to ask the person to communicate with the city account hereafter.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
My question is along those same lines, except if I forward something from my city account to my personal account for ease of use later, then it subjects my personal account to a public records request, right?
You know, it does, on the other hand, I suppose if you somehow had a policy such that you could say, everything that I might find on the personal account is on my city account, that would probably be okay, except I don't know how one would really, you know, be so perfect in
Right.
carrying out such a policy. But theoretically, what you said is correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Andy, can you talk a little more about, are you gonna go more on social media?
Yes, I'm just coming to that now, yeah. Did you have a question? Okay. Yeah, and feel free to ask questions about that. So use of social media involves three different issues. One is the Brown Act and the OGO, I guess that's, I'm lumping those together as one. The other is the Public Records Act, and the third is the First Amendment. The first issue is if you use social media, I'm talking about Facebook pages, Instagram, tweeting, I guess TikTok, there are all kinds of things that people use. And there are many, many of these kinds of social medias, of course, and then the rules are really kind of the same in terms of the legality from our standpoint of all of these, these media. First issue is it can constitute a meeting. You can inadvertently have a meeting. And that's because, as we know, under the Brown Act, this is a meeting, right? But there are many things short of this that are also meetings. There are serial meetings, for example, if one council member goes and talks to each one in turn, trying to achieve a consensus about something, that's a serial meeting. There are what they call spoken hub meetings. If one person talks to a council member here, and another one, and another one, and another one, that can constitute a meeting. There is a famous case from Fremont, from I think 2006 or '07, where the city manager had a policy, they had five council members, and they would meet for breakfast on a Saturday, I guess, and two council members would be in one table, and two in another, and one in a third, and he would go from table to table to table, and always take the position that he was never talking to a majority of the council. And, but they were trying to, but they were discussing the public business, and they were trying to seek consensus, and the court ruled that that was a violation of the Brown Act, which I think makes perfect sense. So if you can violate the Brown Act by having a meeting if you repost things, if you tweet things, if you like, somebody sends an email out to everybody, or puts a posting on a page and says, I think what we as a city ought to do is this, and three other council members says, yeah, great idea, let's do it. That would probably be an illegal meeting, okay? And actually, the OGO has a definition of meeting, which is kind of interesting, it goes beyond the Brown Act, except I think the OGO definition is exactly where the courts would be if this came up. And I'll just read it to you. There are several definitions, but one is, any other use of personal intermediaries or communications media that could permit a majority of the members of a policy body to become aware of an item of business and of the views or positions of other members with respect thereto, and to negotiate consensus thereupon. So that's clearly aimed at use of electronic media. And as we sent a memo out to you last fall, and we can send another one out, and probably should do that, the Brown Act was amended last year to allow certain use of social media. But there were very specific things that you can do and can't do, and for example, very specifically, you can't like other people's postings. You can't repost other, when I say other people, I mean other council members. You can't repost them, you can't retweet a tweet from a council member, because any of those could lead to this kind of thing, that this process, which is inadvertently, becomes a meeting. So, the Brown Act very clearly, in this modification, says you can't do that. You can have a Facebook page, for example, you can use social media to communicate with your constituents back and forth, but it has to be only a communication between you and the constituents or the public, not between you each, each other. Do you have a question?
No, I just want to, I just want to get clarification, so for example, let's say, Peter throws out a Facebook message about an event happening with the city, and then I like it, and I send it out too, it's more just, we have this upcoming event, it's nothing about city business, nothing like that, it's just, you know, an event that's happening within the city, is that viol, does that violate?
The way, the innocent way in which you've asked it, you've posed it, is probably okay, but you have to be really careful, though, and the Brown Act really says you should not repost or retweet, so I would say the safer course is not to do what you just said, even though there's a completely innocent explanation. So the official attorney advice would be, don't do that, okay, because we want to. The other thing, the Brown Act says that if you're going to have a page, you can't block people. And this is a real interesting issue, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mention a few law, court cases that have come up on this issue. And so, there's several issues, so if you have a page, for example, that, where you discuss city business with constituents, then there's an issue of is that page subject to the Public Record Act? And the answer probably is yes. And typically, that means that probably you have to keep everything on it and not delete them. It's not absolutely clear, and it's not absolutely clear if you delete things, whether you can get them back, and it may depend on which kind of group you're on. Facebook apparently says you can't get stuff back if you delete them. And so, it, it's best not to delete, because somebody can claim you're intentionally destroying public records. Yeah?
Andy, if, so you're saying people cannot be blocked from your city council page, right? So if you have two separate, a personal and a city council page, it's only the city council page that cannot be blocked from?
Right, and I'm, as I said, I'm gonna mention a couple of cases that deal with that issue, yes. So I would very definitely advise that if you're going to have a public page where you discuss city business, keep that completely separate from the page where you deal with your family and your friends, and people post cute videos and all that stuff. Because that page, you can do whatever you want with.
Okay, thank you. And then you mentioned deleting a post, or, right, you can't. So Facebook has an option to hide something but not delete it, if it's something vulgar, or, you know, you know, just like vulgar, or uses profanity. Can you delete it, or should you just like hide it?
My advice on that is, is twofold. One is that there, there's an issue of something being a public forum. We've talked about this in various contexts before, for example, the flag waving policy, the issue is not to become a public forum so that anybody can wave, can put any flag on. Similarly, we had an issue once before about banners on First Street. The question was, do we allow every organization to put up a banner? Well, what if one crazy nutty organization puts one up, can we restrict that or not? And if you've created a true public forum, you can't regulate it, really, that's the problem with public forums. If you create a page of your own, let's say a Facebook page, you can create what's called a limited public forum. And you can have specific rules, but you should enforce them then. And one example, the kind of rules, is coming to the council shortly is a social media policy that Rochelle is going to present to you, she's been working on for months, and we've been working with her. That policy has certain rules about the kinds of posts that can go on official city websites, and that's the same issue. So on your personal site, you can have two things. One is you can have, that people have to adhere to the rules of the site company, like Facebook's rules or Twitter's rules. But also, you can have a set of your own rules, where they have to be reasonable, and they have to be what's called content neutral. And that doesn't mean that you can't ban profanity, for example. You can say, look at the content and say, it's, this is lewd, or obscene, I'm gonna ban, that's okay. But what you can't do is ban somebody who's criticizing you, or disagreeing with your view of life. And that can make it very difficult to, to deal with sometimes, because you can get people who are quite antagonistic posting. But if you start blocking them, and then they raise the issue that you've created a limited public forum with your account, and you don't have the right to do that, you can, you can lose a lawsuit. Let me go through a couple of lawsuits and explain this to you, because it's very interesting.
I also have a, just a clarifying question, when you're done with that, too.
Well, go ahead, go ahead now.
Can you, can you describe the definition of, of me, myself, opening up a Facebook page that's meant to be my council member page, this is how I talk to my constituents, it's obviously government-related stuff versus my, my personal one? What's the definition of that? Does the, is it me creating it? Is it the city of Gilroy creating it for me?
No, no.
Like, can you describe the definition so it's clear? And then I have another one, too, where sometimes people will write on Twitter, for instance, or other pages, they'll say, they'll say in like the bio, you know, this is not my official account, or this is, you know, somehow put a disclaimer up there that, go, go here if you want to criticize anything on government stuff, this is my personal account.
Well, that's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
The latter. But I think the, part of the answer is that the city is not requiring any council member to have a, a city account. I mean, we do have city emails and stuff, but the city doesn't say you have to have a Facebook page, for example, as, as a council member. You can have one, and you can have a personal page, and they can be separate, and you're, you're, the one that, where you use to coordinate with the public on city, on the things that affect you as a council member, you should very clearly say, this, that's what this page is. This is not an official city of Gilroy page, it's my page, created by me, Councilmember Hilton, and I'm the administrator of it, and it's only used for these purposes.
And that's subject to the public record?
Potentially, yes, absolutely, yeah, yeah. And on your, your personal page, you probably should have a, you know, the corresponding disclaimer, actually, would be a good idea. Let me, so let me mention to you a couple of interesting cases. First one, and these are very new, this one, here's a 2019 case from Virginia. There was, the chairman of the Board of Supervisors of Loudoun County had a page called the Chair Randall, her name was Rand, you know, Mrs. Randall, Randall Facebook page, she also had a personal page and a campaign page. And the personal and the campaign pages weren't involved in what I'm about to tell you all, that was fine, there was no question, separatism. So somebody was very critical of her, and she barred, on her first official page, she barred that person from commenting for 12 hours. Until, I guess until she cooled off is probably what happened. So this person who had been barred from commenting for 12 hours filed a federal lawsuit. Okay, under the First Amendment, claiming that his First Amendment rights to comment on this public forum had been abridged. And she basically said it wasn't a public forum, but the court said it was, because she was discussing public business, she talked about her work, the, the page was set up in a way that had sort of her expression of things and comments, but it also had things that kind of looked like a city website, where they say, if you have trouble with your plan, call this person, if you have, for public works, you know, it, it had sort of semi-official-looking contact information and things. So the court said, no, she has created a public forum. The plaintiff won the lawsuit and got declaratory relief, which is just, means a statement from the court, just saying they were right, no damages. They got it against the supervisor individually, not against the county. The county was dismissed from the case, because this was her own website, not the county's site. And obtaining declaratory relief after having been barred for 12 hours sounds kind of trivial. I mean, you know, and here it is on appeal, it's written up in the law books. But what it meant as, to her presumably, and maybe to the county, is that the person who won that lawsuit would get a right to attorney's fees under the civil rights laws of the federal acts. So even though all they got is a declaration that they were right and she was wrong, they also could get, in a case like this, hundreds of thousands of dollars of attorney's fees for what is, appears to be, to a reader, a relatively trivial offense. Okay? So, yeah. Yes, yes.
Could a department within the city or any municipality block residents or participants from the page?
Our social media policy, which you'll see, is going to say that various departments, commissions, council can set up webpages, these are all essentially official pages then, subject to the administrator's approval. He has, he's sort of the go, the go-ahead for any of these. And any of those will end up being some sort of public forum where they have to be administered, subject to certain rules of decorum, but they will be subject to the rule that says you can't block somebody just because they are disagreeing with you. So they will be, they will be, and it's a choice the city makes to allow comments on the site or not. For example, the city doesn't have to do that, the city doesn't have to have any Facebook pages, for example. We have a website, we don't have to allow people to comment on it at all. And I know when the website was first set up years ago, we had this discussion at that time about the issue of, should the city have a sort of open forum site? It was almost like Nextdoor, that, some cities were doing that, and thank God we didn't. But there was discussion about if we did that, there would be no control. That would be, you simply can't regulate, other than for, as I said, obscenity or a few things like that, but you, you can't keep people off the site who might otherwise monopolize it to the detriment of the city. Yes?
Okay, I've, yeah, I'm trying to ask a question here. So first of all, we're talking about council members who have their own council member Facebook pages. We're not talking about city of Gilroy pages for council members.
That's correct.
Right? Okay, I want to make sure that that's clear for the public, right? This is not city, so in the example you gave, the court case, the, the council member who blocked somebody for 12 hours, those legal fees, if they were to be imposed, were against that council member, not the city, right?
They would be imposed against the council member, an interesting question would be whether she has a right of indemnification from the city, whether there's an, of course, in scope of her employment and all that kind of stuff, but yes, you're correct.
Okay, so now I have, I have a question that kind of goes back to before you were doing those case examples. When you said that council members should not like or share, or that sort of thing, of a post of another council member, do you mean, it, it doesn't matter what quantity, like, does it need to be a majority of the council?
Doesn't matter, no, no. The Brown Act says, don't do it at all, because let's say you do it, and then someone likes your post, so it snowballs.
I understand, I'm just trying to get clarity on what that means.
And the Brown Act says, you don't do it at all, and I, I'm sure the reason they do it is because of that potential snowballing effect, because you can't control where it goes once you've done it.
Okay, so no one should be liking or commenting or anything on a post of another council member?
Or sharing, or retweeting, or?
Right, or tagging? Right, or tagging?
Or what?
Tagging?
I don't know if tagging is, would, I don't know. I'm not sure. This is an interesting question.
Well, if you tag another council member in your post, that's bringing them into it, isn't it?
Probably, well, but you, I don't know. You're not having a discussion. Maybe we need to talk to Rochelle about that and get the update.
I just, yeah, I, I, that's.
There are a lot of verbs here that could apply. I don't know.
This is only one of the reasons why I wanted to have this because we all have these questions.
Right.
And then when it comes to Nextdoor, oftentimes, at least what I've seen, I'm just using last year as an example, it's members of the public that will start a post and then you'll have a council member comment. And then a, another council member and then maybe nothing, it's just two commenting. But the, the members of the public are wondering where the other council members are. Why aren't they saying something? Why isn't, they don't understand that we can't, we're not supposed to, not even the first person was supposed to have commented. So can you speak to that as to why, so that's, we're not talking a majority.
No, I, I agree with you.
Are not supposed to be in a discussion that has not been publicly noticed.
No, that, that's absolutely correct. And if enough council members comment, then you may have a meeting.
But he, but my, but the point I'm trying to make or that I'm asking you if this is correct, and that is even in a minority, even if there's only three council members on there, it shouldn't be happening at all.
It shouldn't be happening because although if three council members talk over something in a coffee shop, it's okay.
Right.
In theory, if three members of a council, if three council members talk over something in public, it's okay. But in practice, if a fourth one then joins in, you've got a meeting. And that's why the three shouldn't do it in, on the social media.
Right, because you can't possibly know.
Because you can't control it.
Right, and the public doesn't understand that, then they're, they're thinking, well, how come those three said something and the others don't? So, okay, so as a council, we shouldn't be, right.
It's very tricky and it, and it's very, it's gonna be very annoying in certain applications, I'm sure.
I have one more question, I'm sorry. Okay, on, when, when a council member posts something on Facebook and, and I hope, I hope you don't mind that I'm gonna use this example because this is something I did that I'm, I'm thinking maybe is something I should not do. But Councilmember Hilton, you might remember, you made, there was a Facebook post, but it was, he was posting the vote of the council on a particular issue. And it was done at, at a date right after the council meeting, before the minutes were even approved and there for the public to see. And I commented that it was not correct. And, I mean, he was very gracious and said, good catch, you're sorry. But my question is, should I never have touched that? Should I have let that be for the public to see incorrectly because there was no place for them to go to get the correct answer?
Right. I, I think the best answer to your question is you should have sent him a private email saying, hey, Zach, can you change this? But commenting publicly has this danger that we discussed and could violate the Brown Act.
That's what I should have done. Just don't, don't do it on the Facebook page. Okay, thank, thank you, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Let me talk about two more cases. Rebecca, were you gonna ask a question?
Make sure we get to other stuff too.
About the same format, so a resident or constituent makes a Facebook post, one of us can comment on it. Are you saying that we, another, you know, two of us are gonna be discouraged from commenting? Are you, are you saying that the Brown Act now says that we shouldn't comment on, not just on each other's posts, the council members, but as general residents' posts either, other people's posts?
Are, are you talking about someone makes a, a, a comment on your Facebook page or just somewhere else out there in the ether?
No, I'm just saying like on Nextdoor, right? Somebody makes a post and then a council member comments. That's fine.
Well, it's not, that's what I just asked.
It, it's not a good, well, if you're gonna do that on Nextdoor, if one council member comments, well, okay.
So that's from your microphone?
I, I would say it's, it's a way that you can get in trouble. And if another coun, and if any other council member sees that, they should not comment. It, it's almost like a one council member comment rule, although a better rule would be for no one to comment, but I'm not sure that's realistic to say, don't comment on public posts.
But it's, that's not a rule though, right? That no one should comment?
There's no rule that says no one should comment. The rule officially says council members should not comment, like, retweet, et cetera, on other council members' posts.
Other council members.
You can interpret that, I suppose, to say, well, one council member can comment then, but whether that's a thing, whether council norms ought to address that, I don't know. That's, that's a way to get in trouble.
I'm not talking about a, a council member commenting on another council member's post. I'm saying a council member commenting on a general resident's. She's saying a member of the public.
Well, if a general resident says X and then council, a council member comments, says, I agree, blah, blah, blah. If another council member responds to the same post and says, I agree, blah, 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 those two are agreeing on something, even though they're not talking to each other.
Right.
So that would, that would not be a positive. That would not be allowed under the Brown Act.
If we exceeded the three, right, got it.
And, and there's no way, and once it starts, it's, there's no way to stop it because the fourth person might not see the other two. Yeah, I mean, it could drive you crazy thinking about these, but, yeah.
Andy, but, I mean, the, the mayor mentioned something that's, and I think a lot of us think this way, is where, you know, I have two questions here. So, for example, if somebody from the public, you know, says something about, oh, you know, an update on the city or something they wanna know, you know, about a parking lot, you know? And if only one or two of us reply back or if someone has a question, then we're in a position where the rest of us are saying, well, we understand we can't reply. But now the residents who want us to be as transparent as possible are saying, well, how come Fred doesn't say anything? How come Peter doesn't say anything? How come they're the only two that overspeak out, you know? And we can't go on there with this because of A, B, C, and D. So I mean, that's kind of, you know, it's kind of tricky there for me.
It is, but, but the danger is if, if two more of you reply, then suddenly you've got four people discussing something and agreeing on something. One, one approach to that would be to have staff reply to more of these things, but I know that, I mean, I mean, it's difficult because there obviously is a desire to be responsive. You want to reply to the public.
And then my second question, so earlier you talked about personal pages versus city Facebook page, right? So for example, I'll just use me as an example where my, my Facebook page is open to everybody, right? And I don't ever put, make any stance about if someone comments about they didn't like my view on this or this, and I don't say anything, just let it go. I get beat up, just let it be, right? Because I understand that. It's more promotions, it's more, you know, what's happening within the city, event, city updates. And for example, like, you know, I might forward, you know, the mayor's monthly talk, right? Or I may like her when she mentions that. So that's wrong for me to do, even though it's just like a promotion event. And then like what the mayor said earlier is, you know, as you all know me, I go to a lot of events, I take pictures because I want people to see that we're out there. So it's wrong of me to post the other folks who are out there as well. You follow what I'm saying? If we're at a event, a chamber event, and I'm taking a picture with Marie or Peter or Zach or somebody, I'm gonna say, we can take a picture.
I, I wouldn't say posting the photos is bad.
No, no, but you understand that, I mean, but earlier you said tagging was wrong.
No, I said, I don't, I'm not sure about tagging. I gotta ask Rochelle what I said about tagging.
I just, I just, for me, I just need clarification because again, I'm the type of person that.
Well, we may have, you may have very specific questions about very specific things on sites. And one of the things that the case, there are two more cases I wanna talk to you about.
I know, I wanna be careful we don't take too much time on just social media.
I know.
Because I just.
Obviously, people are interested.
I know, but we have more.
One of the, one of the cases, the court says.
Your answer so far doesn't answer my question, so I'm even more confused.
I know, and, and I can't. So, but one of the cases says very much that part of the problem in this area of law is that the, the rules are changing so much. The terminology changes. What, what the, the companies like Facebook allow changes. This court, the, the third court says these are simply uncharted seas with plenty of icebergs. That's a footnote that this court makes in their comments. So let me show you about just two more quick cases. One came out of Missouri. A state representative blocked somebody from her Twitter account. And the court upheld that. And the court differentiated, you may recall that Donald Trump was prevented from blocking people from his Twitter account back when he had Twitter. And the court there basically said, look, you're the president, you're talking politics. I mean, this is publicly a public account. In this case, the court looked very closely at what this representative was doing and said that her account was really used for her campaign. It grew out of a campaign webpage. Although it talked about state business, it mainly talked about how great she was as a representative and kind of tooted her own horn, so to speak. And looked very closely at all this stuff and concluded that this was not intended to be a public forum. It, they said it's more analogous to a campaign newsletter. And a campaign newsletter, you can send to whomever you want. You don't have to send it to everybody. So in that case, the court very factually looked at the website and concluded it was not a public forum. I raised this not to suggest that we should try to, you should try to do that, but rather to say that these are very fact-intensive and can change depending on what your site morphs into. Okay, final case came out of Southern California. Trustees of a school district were held to have wrongfully barred certain people from commenting on their Facebook and Twitter pages. And what happened here is that these, these trustees had their own personal, first of all, they had personal pages and that was no problem. Okay, they could do whatever they wanted. Again, the rule there. They blocked, I, I guess they had some very outspoken critics who would comment on everything. So as soon as a member of the public said something, then these plaintiffs would, would add the same paragraph, lambasting the, the trustee. So by the end of the day, there'd be like 200 comments from the public and then 200 more from these people that were the same. It was kind of, you know, the, the kind of thing that would drive you crazy if you were administering a site. So the court said that it was actually okay for them to block these comments because they were repetitive. That was a valid reason. However, the court said that in a public forum, any rule you have has to be narrowly tailored to achieve your result without going overboard. And the court said, you've blocked these people for three years now. That's not a narrowly tailored rule. This is a strange decision, I'll tell you. The court said, it, it was okay, it would have been okay to block them for a little while. It's not clear how, maybe a month. But you can't block somebody essentially permanently because they're doing this behavior. That doesn't make sense to me, actually, but that's what the court said. And the court pointed out that these people did not have rules on their site. And that, they call it rules of etiquette or protocols. It would have been very helpful if these trustees on their site, and I'm recommending it to everybody, and I think probably Rochelle could help drafting perhaps, to come up with rules about repetitive posts will not be tolerated, will be blocked, or something like that. In addition to the other rules about lewd, beat lewd postings and, and, you know, inflammatory, racial things, that kind of thing. It would be, if they, if these people had had that kind of rule, they probably could have barred these people. Now, interestingly, according to this suit, Facebook has a way that you can pick out filter words and block them. Is that, yeah, okay, well, you know that, yeah. So what one of these people tried to do is they picked out, they, they said, all right, I'm gonna block all comments on my site by choosing 2,000 filter words. So that it would be virtually impossible to write an English comment without getting blocked. And the court said it's expressing no opinion on that, about whether, you know, with the, the way the rules are, whether that would be legitimate or not. I would, because I guess the idea is on Facebook, you can't really block all comments because Facebook is designed to have people commenting. I mean, that's their business model. But if you had a site where you couldn't allow comments, it would be just like having, I guess, having a regular website in effect, which certainly you can have. So that's another interesting issue here. And, and it's in that context that the court quoted this thing about we're in danger, uncharted seas with icebergs, because the law is continuing to evolve. So in any event, that, that's, that's pretty much all I wanna say about social media, but it's a fascinating area of the law and it's something that you can use, but you really do have to be careful and mindful of the, the issues that we've talked about. Are there any other questions?
I think, I'm just gonna kind of sum it up because I, I think we're pretty much okay on our own, you know, social media pages. At least I haven't seen anybody misusing their own pages. It's just helpful to understand that we shouldn't be commenting on not only each other's stuff, but really, my takeaway is we shouldn't be commenting on other people's either, whether it's Nextdoor, Facebook, or whatever, because you just can't tell when, I mean, unless you're gonna scroll through all the comments, you don't know if you might be the fourth person, you know, saying something. And even if you're not, the whole council, we all wanna respond to things and we can't. And so if we didn't get there fast enough, then there's already three people who have said something. And so really, just out of best practices, if you're just talking best practices, we shouldn't be participating in those kinds of discussions because they are not noticed to the public.
From a legal best practice standpoint, I agree with you. It's be difficult to deal with that.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, kind of what, getting out of there. Okay, please, next subject, yes.
Yeah, you know, and, and the mayor brings up a really good point, again, is being very cautious, you know? Yeah, sometimes, you know, I see something I wanna, but I don't, you know, and but, you know, again, I think, like you mentioned, we do a good job without really jumping into stuff like that and getting ourselves in, in a position where, you know, we might violate the Brown Act or something. But is there, for example, like if I did something, is there a, a warning from the city from the, or, you know, say, hey, you can't do that? That way, you know, again, I know what, you know, I'm just trying to make sure that we all know, you know.
If it comes to our attention, we can certainly say something. But we're not monitoring sites in real time, so, yeah.
Just sometimes.
Sure, we'd be, no, we'd be happy. And if you have a question, we're always happy to try to help out.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's great, okay. All right, so I need to get back to the agenda and ask if there is any, any, yeah, any public comment.
I think we might have one from Mr. Turkish.
I get, my question is, if you, you have to watch the interaction between you all. But say somebody contacts me or another member of the community, maybe three or four of you all, and say, look, can you post this and, and stuff like that? What, is there any issue with a councilperson or elected official or a city official contacting me and saying, could you do this for me? What is the, I don't think there would be anything, but would that break any kind of Brown Act issue? Thank you.
Want me to answer or do you wanna answer that?
Well, I, I'll, I'll try.
Okay.
I, I would say if, if several council members contact you and ask you to do something, that, you know, you could be ending up having a meeting. Or having a serial meeting if there's, certainly if there's more than three. So I, I, I think if you talk to four council members about anything and if they ask you to do something or you ask them to do something, that's potentially a meeting.
Andy, if, Andy, so that, that's a really good question. So let's just say we get emails from a, from a constituent and it includes all of us on there, right? And as councilmen, we don't respond back, but everybody on there is responding back, but we're still on that thread, even though we're not saying anything. Does that put us in a position where, you know, we're gonna violate, you know, it's a meeting because we have our emails on there? You follow what I'm saying?
Well, the, the normal rule is if, if you get a situation like that, you must not respond all. Because if you respond all, then everybody's in the discussion. And so you can respond to one person. If everybody else responds separately to that person, that's sort of okay.
Yeah, I, I think what, what Councilmember Tobar is saying is sometimes constituents email 100 people. And all seven council members are in that 100 people. And then people reply all. And so in the, but, but we're still just viewers of that. None of us is or should be responding to any of those things. They just come across and we don't respond. Right.
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Okay.
I wanna thank you for this, a lifesaver. But I just can't leave, like, it won't stay on.
Okay.
But I want to ask you, on the paperwork that you wrote, I don't see, it says council members. Doesn't, does mayor is included in the council member? Or should it be mayor separate in the, should the language be mayor and council?
What document are you referring to?
I'm sorry?
What, what are you referring to?
I'm referring to your, well, yeah.
The staff report?
Not the staff report. What you're talking about now, the, the conduct. Yeah, I guess this is where we're on, right? The subject, the conduct of council members?
Okay, I would say the answer, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and answer your question even though, yeah, not new, not normally a dialogue. But when we say council members, it includes the seven members, the seven member body is the.
And we're talking about speaking, listening to others respectfully and not making faces. That includes everybody.
Yes, all seven council members.
I just wondered on that. Thank you so much.
Okay, are there any other speakers?
I do not see any at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, so close the public comment on that one. And then I guess we'll move on to 3.2. And, Peter, would you like to take that one on?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start the discussion with regard to council norms. And let me offer a little bit of historical background. This is a process that really began a couple of years ago. It was under the last, the last mayor when we started to look at ways in which to memorialize best practices for the operations and the behavior of the council as it relates to each other, but best practices for the operations and the behavior of the council as it relates to each other, but also to the public as well. And, you know, it's one of those things that just amidst all of the projects and activities that came up and, you know, some unfortunate activities as well, this kind of fell to the back burner, but we're bringing it back now. And the goal is to have a dialogue around these, these goals and these council norms. Again, there are some that are focused on the mechanics of how we operate, so how, how we run meetings, how we conduct things, so the actual, you know, the inner operations there. But it also includes council interactions, again, our treatment one to the other. And the idea here is that we're really trying to lay out the goals and aspirations that should guide our behavior to one another and to the public. So this is a list that I've contributed to, the mayor's contributed to, I know Andy's taking a look at this as well. Please know, this is not set in stone, that's why we're having the discussion. But it really is an opportunity for us to come together and, again, lay out how best it is we can interact with each other and the goals to which we are going to strive when we, when we interact with each other and with staff. So with that, let me turn it back to the mayor for any comments before the discussion.
Okay, thanks. No, I think we should just go through them one by one, and I know Andy has things to say that he just told me he is saving for the norms, that I thought he was doing the presentation. So why don't we just go through them, and with everyone's thumbs up, we'll just keep moving on to the next one. Would that be an all right way to do this? Okay, so let's, let's just do it that way. So, the first one, does anybody have any comments or suggested changes, or is the first one all right?
Can we read them as we go through them?
Well, we can, it's gonna take a little more, yeah, we've all had them, they're in the pack, but sure.
Just because they're, I'll read it.
Because they're not numbered. I know, that's something that I would like to suggest we do, number them.
Number one, number the norms.
Okay, so I'll read the first one. Three minutes per public comment per agenda item, five minutes for applicants, with two-minute rebuttal for applicant. City clerk will provide a timer, staff will make every effort to limit staff reports to five minutes with opportunity for staff to elaborate based on council questions.
Now, we're not talking about, what, I mean, we've had a lot of engagement. And so you're also, is this also going to apply to meetings where there's a lot of public speakers lined up?
This is, we're saying that for agenda items, we are going to, we're going to start with three minutes.
Right.
The Brown Act and OGO. OGO 17A, 17A.6, I think is the code section, I have it here somewhere. 17A.16 allows the time limits to be changed.
Right. No, mayor, and that's why I'm asking, do, so are we referring to?
We're referring to what we want to start, we have to just have a goal.
This is just the start, a set amount of time for start, because we don't.
Yeah.
Isn't it already at three minutes?
Yes, there's no change here. This is not changing anything. It's not in red, it's just, that's why.
It might be helpful to focus on the changes in red.
Okay. I'm fine, you guys. Everybody's had this, so I just threw out a way to go about it. If someone has a better way, that's great.
Mayor, but I think, if I may, I think Councilwoman Armandares has a good question, because, yes, I know that the norm is three minutes per public comment. But sometimes when we have a lot of speakers and we're, you know, we're trying to reduce the time, we get some folks who get upset or something, "You can't do that, can't do that," but you're saying.
But you can do that.
But you can do that.
I just want to make sure they're qualified on that.
And we can even add, if we want to go through these, the changes first, and then see what maybe someone wants to add, because maybe that's one, that's something you want to add.
Well, that's why, that's why I brought up the question, because I wanted to talk about times when we do have a lot of public speakers.
Yeah.
And if we can set benchmarks so that it doesn't feel and seem so arbitrary to the public.
Yeah, because it's not arbitrary at all. We can set those benchmarks. We just need to also discuss, are we going to have ti, an overall time limit to public comment, which is something OGO actually doesn't allow, because OGO and the Brown Act say everyone who wants to speak is allowed to be heard. So then, you go towards, okay, take a pause. When you ask for, when you call for public comment and you open it up, you pause for about a minute so that everybody who wants to speak can, so that you actually know how many people want to speak. Because when people are allowed to continue to bring in for a half hour of testimony.
There's a cutoff to sign up.
Exactly, there has to be a cutoff, otherwise you can't, you can't stand by whatever the number is that you want to do. So I've had a very, very hard time with that all last year and would appreciate any help this council can give, okay? On how to, how to navigate that. Especially when OGO is for the benefit, the reason OGO was passed in Gilroy was for the benefit of Gilroy citizens to be able to participate more in the government process. And what's been happening is we've been getting a lot of public comment that is nowhere near Gilroy. It's not from people from Gilroy, and that's causing Gilroians to not be able to speak as well. So that's another thing that just, you know, to have to consider.
Yeah.
Okay, so to stay, let's just stay on point for this one, though, right now?
Right, and so what I would ask, that we, that we set some benchmarks in terms of numbers. So if we're gonna cut public comment, that we say if there's more than 15 people on this, on a particular agenda item or doing items not on the agenda, then we cut it to two minutes. And if there's more than 25, then we cut it to one minute.
Okay, let's, could we, do you want to discuss that right now, Peter, or do you want to save that to the end? Because she's, I would like to separate changes from things that were already here. So this first item is for items on the agenda.
Right.
And I am not proposing that we change anything for items on the agenda. Are you, are you asking to be more specific about items on the agenda?
Items on the agenda and for public comment for items not on the agenda.
I know, but they need to be separate things.
That's fine.
Okay, so for this one, this is for items on the agenda. What I'm asking is, do we need to insert here that if there are more than a certain number of people, then we're going to allow less than three minutes for an item on the agenda?
Yes, I think that's been our practice.
Okay. Actually, well, that hasn't happened in the year that I've been mayor. I haven't had to limit, I haven't had to do less than three minutes for an item on the agenda. It's only been items not on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, so what, what would you propose that that be?
So I heard the suggestion from Councilwoman Armandares was, it was, if there are more than 15 speakers, that the time limit would be now two minutes. Is that correct? Okay.
And I would ask for it to be less than that, because that's 45 minutes, and that's not 45 minutes. People aren't ready. You end up losing a minute, yeah, so that's like an hour, right there.
Maybe 10 as a, I mean, 10 seems to be a sufficiently high.
So up to 10, three minutes?
Up to 10, three minutes.
I think it should drop down to one minute.
Say again?
I think it should drop to one minute after the 10.
After 10?
If we have 10 speakers, they can go three minutes, but more than that, it goes down to one.
I would, I would not agree with that one. I do like if there's, up to 10 would be two minutes. Anything over 10, then we'd drop it down to one minute.
Okay, I thought I heard him say up to 10 was three minutes.
Up to 10 is three minutes, and then 11 to 20 is two minutes?
There you go.
And then 21 plus is one minute?
Yeah.
I'd rather, well, I, okay, I mean, I'm only one member up here, but I'd rather be a minute before you get to 20. 20 is a lot of public comment.
How about 15?
We're talking about items, wait, we're talking about items on the agenda, right?
Right.
Correct.
Actually, that's fine. That's on the agenda. Okay.
Yeah.
So up to 10 is three minutes, up to 20 is two, is that what you said?
11 to 20 is two, and then 21 plus is one.
That's two minutes, and then over 20 is one minute. Okay, and how do we handle, what is the time period that I'm allowing, what, because I, only because I'm presiding, what's the time period that we are allowing members of the public to say that they want to speak? In other words, when do, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, so when do we cut off?
Yeah, when do we, when do we cut off? Because otherwise, how are, how do you know? You can't say it's only gonna be 10. Now, once you've started three minutes, everybody who comes has to be three minutes, and so you can, and this happened a lot last year, where we end up with 30 speakers, and they all have to be at whatever was the time set at the very beginning, even though when you've set the time, there were only eight.
Got it, so maybe within a minute of the announcement of that agenda item.
I think, I think something that other municipalities use, like City of San Jose and our County Board of Supervisors, is that once the supervisors start, stop speaking, right, stop commenting, and then it allows the public who is participating to process and to come up with, you know, to, to think about what's being said, right, and then make their comments. I think that's fair to the public. So I would maybe put it at a point in the agenda versus a time limit, if that's possible, because sometimes our comments go on, our discussion goes on for quite a while, and I think it gives the public time to gather themselves and to process.
Right, well, what I, what I was, what I was getting at was, okay, Dion, I'll let you go in a second, but the public is listening to the present, they're listening to all of us, we're listening to everything, and they can be deciding if they've got something they want to say or not. So when it comes time to, when I open the public hearing, then give them a minute to say. So they've already heard all of that fore. That's what I'm saying. Councilmember Bravo?
I think this is why it's always been up to the prerogative of the mayor.
I know.
But to take the pressure off the mayor, why didn't we leave it with the mayor? And then she asks for a vote of the council. If she wants to go to one minute, she asks the council, the council agrees with that.
Yeah, that might be tougher.
I think that would leave it too ambiguous, like.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're all, I don't know yet, but I think we might all be in agreement with up to 10 speakers, three minutes, 11 to 22 minutes, and over 21 minute. What we are trying to now establish is, how do we know what that number of speakers is?
At what point in time do we cut off?
It's, it should be, we should, well, not at what point in time do we cut off, how do we know what that number is before we decide? How do we know that we have only 10?
Supposedly, said it was something like, based on the number of cards that are initially presented at the start of public comment.
Okay.
So the city clerk can ask for cards, people give cards, some people want to speak later.
I just, I just feel like one minute is too short of a time for somebody to like, say, "Oh, that inspired me to say something."
Then we can pause for two minutes.
Maybe a couple minutes?
I think, yeah, we could, we could allow people to queue up, and they have to be queued up, ready to try to sign the card. Two minutes, one minute, whatever it is, that's fine. I think it should be after, it should be after the staff presentation and after questions, because it might trigger something, hearing something live time, somebody in the audience might go, "Wait a second, I now want to talk about that." So I think, yeah, minute, two minutes, whatever that is.
Yeah.
At the conclusion of council questions.
Correct. At the conclusion of council questions.
I think that.
That's when we, well, that's when we open public comment.
That's when you start the public comment.
That's when you start it.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I think it'd be good to have this on our packet, you know, sort of. So instead of somebody questioning, "Well, how come I only get two minutes? How come I only get one minute?" It's clear and it's worded there that, you know, up to 10 speakers, you get three minutes. You follow what I'm saying? So the audience knows that it's not you making this up right then and there.
I know.
You follow what I'm saying?
I do. It's just, it's, again, been a tough call, because it's been three minutes, but it's always said, but it's up within discretion, it can change, and I decided to put one minute on there because it's easier to tell, have somebody come, you can always write in a comment, right? There's, this is not silencing anybody. You can always send your written comment in, and then you have one minute to say it. It's easier if you're prepared for one to be told you get three, than to be prepared for three and then be told you get one. And so that was my reason for wanting to say it that way, but again.
And like Dion said earlier, you know, just trying to make it easier, and again, sometimes you get bashed a little bit. But if we have it on the speaker card.
Oh, I get bashed a lot.
If we get on a speaker card, on the speaker card says, you know, up to 10 speakers, get three minutes, 10, 11 to 20, two minutes. That way, the audience already sees it.
Okay.
And question.
Okay, so I think what I, what I would like to do is we'll do the timeframes like we just said, up to 10, three, 11 to 12, two, and over 21. But when I open the public comment, I'm gonna give it a minute. It'll be clear whether or not there's a lot of people. Usually, for items on the agenda, there aren't. If there are a lot of people, I'll wait a little more than a minute. But we will, at some point, close, ask how many there are, and then that will determine how much time each speaker gets.
Correct.
Okay? Dion?
And I think we need to streamline things, have people get over there standing in line.
I know, I've been trying to do that with people.
Some of these people take a minute just to get up and walk over there.
I know.
We still have social distancing, though.
Well, they can social distance.
Okay, well, that's for me to probably announce better and say, and maybe we start reserving this front row here just for people who are gonna speak. And don't let regular people sit there, so that they can do that. Okay, so what this first one is gonna say then is, is three minutes per public, public comment per agenda item, up to 10 speakers. And then 11 to 12 speakers, two minutes, over 21 minute. And based on the number that we, that exists at the time that we set this, people cannot come after that and say they want to make a comment. That's what I'm hearing this council say. Right?
No, I think you have to let people make the comment, you just can't count them in that number, though. I don't think, when the hearing's on, I don't think you can prevent somebody from coming in before it's closed to make a comment.
Oh, well, it's still open.
Well, it's still, you still have the issue of people wait and don't fill out cards, you know, there may be confusion, but I think you have to allow that.
So then this can't work, the way we just said.
It'll work most, it'll work almost all the time, because most people will fill out their cards.
That's not the case, Andy, that has not been the case last year, no. I tried that. The only reason this became an issue was because that wasn't happening.
Well, if someone comes up to talk and they're number 22, they just do the minute.
You can't, that's just the point.
But why can't they?
It's not the number of speakers, it's when we count the number of speakers. When we say, right, we're only taking public comment up until now, and for the next two minutes, and they put their card in.
What you can't do is, you can't allow some people to speak longer than other people, that's the problem.
Even if you did it in the rotation of the car, I mean, not in the rotation, but the way the cards were received?
Yeah, you still can't do that.
Oh, okay.
Can you just ask people to raise their hand if they're planning on speaking?
We can try, I'd prefer to go back to then, up to 10. We don't usually even have 10 speakers on agenda items. Really, the issue has come with items not on the agenda. But I would rather go up to 10, up to 10, three minutes, and then after that, one minute, like Dion said. If we can't.
It would just make them both the same, too. Why have confusion to the agenda and not on the agenda?
I'd support that, same on and off the agenda, yeah.
Okay.
But then, but I like the gradual, right, the gradual, because it also, it also encourages people to hurry up and sign up to speak, you know, so they're not.
But if they don't have to, it's not gonna help. They don't have to sign up to speak, which is what Andy is saying, that we can't, we can't.
Yeah.
A lot of people don't fill out the card, they're just gonna speak.
I've seen most people fill it out.
I know, and if we go, you gotta look into the future, too. If we go hybrid, we don't know how meetings are gonna go, and people can call in that aren't even Gilroy citizens. And so we need to be able to keep, to, we need to have a way of controlling, like, you can't have two and a half hours of public comment like we did under the last mayor, from people calling in from Canada and Portland and Seattle about wanting a bike park in Gilroy. And that's what can happen. That's what I am, that's what I, as the mayor, what OGO lets me do, is to control the time. We're spending an awful lot of time, you guys, tonight, on something that I would like to maybe just keep, then, keep, keep the prerogative of deciding as I go, because I am not gonna get caught in a position where I cannot control the amount of time. We have an obligation to get to our agenda.
I think, so that as we don't, we don't discriminate or appear to discriminate, right?
There's no discrimination, it's the same amount of time for everyone.
What I'm saying is that so that we don't appear to discriminate or discriminate against people who are calling in from other cities or towns or countries, which we can't do, then we set the time. And all, because if not, it appears, and there's a lot of public feedback regarding that, saying, you know, "Why did the mayor cut us off? Because she didn't like what we had to say?" And whether that's true or not, it's how it appears, and it's how the people, the members of our community feel. And that's, that's, they shouldn't feel that way.
I disagree. I disagree that that's how they feel. Maybe how the folks you're talking to feel.
I disagree with you interrupting me, too. What I'm trying to say, mayor, is that we're, we're trying to make it less arbitrary and more fair, correct, to the community, correct? So.
I suggest we do the rest of this.
Councilmember the Romano's?
Yeah, I, I still like the idea of putting it out ahead of time so people know what it is they're, they're getting into, so to speak. And I don't think that prohibits you at any point from saying, "You know what? We've got X number of people, we have a, you know, really long agenda tonight, we're gonna have to cut down." So I think you still retain that discretion if you need it. But I think that the, that the default is around, this is the sliding scale. You know, you've got 1 to 10, you've got 3, 10 to, you know, whatever it is, and then so forth and so on. I think that's, and then it's just a question of whether people, you know, queue up and sign within that, within that two minutes.
Okay, and if I find that it's just not going that way, that too many people, it's doubling the number.
People are not, you know, playing by those parameters, then you always have the discretion.
Okay, so I'll include on the agenda like I always have, that it's subject to being adjusted down depending on if there's even more than that.
Yep.
Right, or if it, or if the number changes after we've said it. That's what we're talking about. Okay. Okay, Andy?
I think so.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying.
Well, what we're saying is what I was trying to say in the beginning, that we'll give it a minute and ask Ty how many there are and make that decision. But what you're saying is then if somebody still comes up, I can't say no, all I can do is factor that that into the next time. Which to me feels like exactly what I was doing all of last year. Is factoring then the next time, and that's what led to the one minute.
But most of the time you know when there's gonna be a lot of speakers too.
You do when it's in person. It's very hard to tell on virtual. And that's, that was the big problem.
You know, and that's, and a virtual meeting, it would be more reasonable to say, you must let us know in advance, put your hand up so the clerk can call on you.
Oh, I can do that.
I think we can do that on a virtual.
I have, the Board of Supervisors certainly does that, but.
No, I know, and other cities do too, but I don't think we can do it when people are sitting here and then somebody gets up. That's a different situation. If we want to make that distinction, I would support that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so do we have a, is that clear enough for everybody? I'll write it up and I'll work with with Ty to to get that. And of course, it'll come before us either in consent or some way where everybody can see it and have to approve it. But it's basically gonna say that when the meetings are in person, people can still come up, but virtually, we will wait till everybody's had their virtual hand raised and then. Make a a judgment there and not have any more, be able to come in and comment. Okay, is that a thumbs up from everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. So. Can we move quickly through, the the next few are very, uh, they're just mechanical. I don't think they change the meaning of anything. Did anybody have a problem with any of these, or can we just keep going on? Okay, down to the blue, that was Andy's suggestion to delete that one. Does anyone have a problem with deleting that?
The the reason for that is that we can't really require at a public hearing that people not bring new stuff to a public hearing. I mean, that's the purpose of a public hearing, so, yeah.
Andy, does this apply to where, you know, our meeting starts at six, and then at. Five fifty-nine or six oh five, we do an email from the city staff or. City manager saying, oh, this is new information that the applicant wants you to know. You follow what I'm saying, it's like.
Yes, I do, and it's it's actually worse than that because during the public hearing, the applicant can stand up and say, here's new information. We can't prevent that. Now, the city may or may not be able to absorb the new information and may ignore it or whatever, but you can't prevent somebody from presenting it.
I just ask because sometimes that's, that's happened quite a bit.
Right.
And it's like, well, I already made my judgment on something and it's like, oh, I didn't see it.
Yeah, but you're supposed to make your judgment at the public hearing, so.
No, no, but you follow what I'm saying, it's just, I didn't see that, I didn't see that information.
No, I think the risk an applicant takes by not getting information in advance is that it may not be considered or may be ignored, it may be overlooked, but that's their risk. So, that's the reason for deleting that.
Okay, so everyone's good with that? Okay, and then the next two, there were no changes except punctuation stuff. And then it comes to what you see in red, those are new. Is everybody, I'll I'll read it because it's new. External communication by council members during meetings, whether through cell phones, laptops, or other devices, creates the perception that private communications are influencing the outcome of decisions. This contradicts Gilroy's open government ordinance. If a council member must engage in external communication for personal purposes, the council member should excuse themselves from the meeting. Everyone.
Apart from the exact wording of this, this is really a Brown Act issue, an open government issue, of getting, receiving information at the meeting, not, and and. Allowing the public to know what the information is, that's the basis of your decisions. So this is really a Brown Act focused issue.
So is everybody good with that? Okay, and then the next one, council members should not view or interact with social media during meetings. Is everyone okay with that? Okay. No real changes. No. Oh, that, see, that's no change, but what about it? Yeah, Cat Tucker had to point that out to me. I didn't know that there was that rule either. Unless a majority of the council members.
That was his rule he wanted.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
We used to, we used to have meetings that went right late.
Right.
And that's why we had that.
When Don Gage was mayor, there was a meeting that went to three forty in the morning. And I was there, that's how I know.
Okay, so, no, I'm not suggesting it be changed.
And that's, that's within the confines of the Brown Act? You can do that?
It's not illegal, it's not very productive, I'm telling you that.
I just, the reason I ask is I was on a um, on a commission and we had a start time and an end time. And uh, and um, Jody told us that we couldn't have an end time. So that's why I'm wondering.
You're saying the question, whether the eleven PM is it?
Mm-hmm.
No, I think that's certainly legal and I think many, many cities do, but what typically, and typically it's worded like this, where the council can vote to go ahead. And if if something runs up against it, it can be continued.
Right.
Sometimes there are restrictions on continuances, like with these new housing element laws, where sometimes you, or there are time limits where you have to prove something in a certain period of time. But generally speaking, you have the option to curtail a meeting and continue matters.
Yeah, yeah, because our.
It's not illegal to do that.
Our commission meeting couldn't have an end time, we were told, so that's why.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just agree with that.
Okay.
The next, um, everything is is uh. Not, doesn't change the meeting until you get to council interactions. Respect the open government process and the majority vote of the council. Open government is about the process, not the outcome. Does everybody understand that or have any questions or comment on that?
I mean, I'd like more information about what the issue is behind that, like, why are we, why is that being proposed?
Be, it's because as a council, we should be, when when the council votes on something, then there shouldn't be anything after that. That is going against what the council majority said, because it's the council majority. That's how this, that's how we operate, by council majority. That's how we govern.
No, I get that, obviously, but.
Okay.
And I mean, it just. It feels unnecessary. Open government is about the process, not the outcome.
Right, meaning as long as the process was followed, as long as there was due process and public noticing and a public hearing and public comment and all those things. Then the fact that someone is disappointed with the outcome does not change the fact that the process was followed and that everybody needs to respect whatever that out. Process was followed. That's what that means.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, okay?
Yeah.
Is that a thumb, you don't have to do a thumbs up, I'm just asking if we have a majority that's a thumbs up, because these are gonna be, again, adopted by the majority. Okay, and I see, one, two, three, four, five, I see a majority, okay. Okay. So then it's give personal, that's also a very minor change. Uh, to respect, okay, this one is, this one is a change. To respect the independence of our commissions. That part was similar, we had that before, you see that in black. No council member may attempt to influence any commission, that was there before too. Or regularly attend commission meetings, except with respect to a matter that affects the council member individually. Regular attendance may be seen as intimidating or an attempt to use command influence even when such is not the council member's intent. However, council members are encouraged to watch recorded commission meetings.
So Mayor, as I understand it, you know, I'm I'm thinking of a hypothetical, so let's say that um. You know, I I were routinely showing up at the historic heritage, you know, commission meetings, you know, every month, kind of listening in and watching and all, participating here, whatever.
Use planning commission now.
Planning commission, yeah, that's right, we just had that discussion, yeah.
Right.
But um, so so that kind of repeated presence would be discouraged.
Correct.
Unless, for example, you know, my home were in a historic district, this, you know, discussion or something like that. Then it would be, okay, this is pertinent to me as a citizen, I can show up in my capacity as a citizen. Got it, okay, now that seems to make sense.
Mayor?
Yes?
I could give an example. Um, when I first got on the council, we were building the library. I I, you know, I'm the uh representative for the county library system. And I used to go to the meetings because I was just into getting the library done and everything and I never thought anything of it. And they called the mayor to talk to me, they said it was very intimidating me being there. And they couldn't talk freely because of council members.
Right.
There was an issue in Los Gatos about ten years ago too, where a council member ended up getting censured. Because he was seen as putting too much pressure on planning commissions by going to meetings and then talking to new commissioners about projects and stuff. And it was very divisive, it ended up in lawsuits and a huge amount of bad feeling. So this, this.
You can do it without even realizing we're doing it, having that influence.
Yes.
Yeah, because we're the ones appointing them and they're supposed to be independent of us. They're supposed to be another way for the public. To come forward and study issues and go back and forth, and then that commission is supposed to bring their independent recommendation to the council. It is not supposed to be that a council member is driving what that commission recommends or trying to.
Mayor, let me ask another uh, very similar question, um, right, because we're talking about commissions here, right?
Yes.
Um, and I I understand we all have our assigned committees that we sit on and stuff. Well, let's just say that uh, there's a committee that, you know, one of our council members and we do have a backup. But I would like to learn more, I would like to be there because there might things, be things I don't agree with, what they're saying, what they're doing, or the lack of things that they're doing. You know, or, you know, the the non-progress that they're making. So I could not attend those meetings because it would be seen as intimidating.
It's same here that you can't, that the backup can go.
No, 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 e- even if if I'm not the backup.
Oh.
You know what I'm saying? Um, where I want to make sure that my point gets, you know, my view or my point gets to them, but if. My colleague is not representing me, for, you know, Andy, I'm not saying this happened, I just want to make sure that this is also included that. That if um, you know, yeah, we have our, we have our main primary council member, we have our backup, but I still feel that there's no progress being made. Could I not attend those meetings?
Okay, are we confused? Well, this is getting at our city commissions, the the.
No, that's what I'm saying, this is only commissions, it's not.
Yeah, because because we appoint our commissioners. The other bodies you're talking to, we don't appoint them.
And might I also say, I think, I think this goes.
Then look, Peter.
I think this goes to a larger issue too, Fred, that you're, council member, Tova, excuse me. Uh, this goes to a larger issue too that we we had up above too, where we we share that kind of personal feedback with the, with the. The other member, so if there were a situation like that, if it's me, if it's anybody else, whoever that might be. I I think that's the perfect opportunity to privately share those concerns with them, making sure there's that open communication, you know, and making sure that the. The representation meets your expectations and your needs, but I think it's, again, this is, this is exactly what we're talking about. That kind of conduct should be happening, you know, in in private where there can be a a free and open exchange of those.
No, and you're absolutely right, and I mean, and that's, that's usually the case, but let's just say Peter's on a, you know, on a committee that. I spoken to Peter and we still don't see eye to eye on his views and my views in regards to this committee, then I can't do anything as a council member because.
No, you you wouldn't, I I think if we're, if we're looking to the water district, right, you're my, you're my backup, my alternate, okay? We just talked about the pricing changes that might, the water commission might be looking at, you know, in April, and and I made some comments about what I thought. And if you said Peter's totally wrong, they should raise the rates through the roof, whatever, okay? Be that as it may, and I'm not a charity minister, but I'm just saying hypothetically, but even if you had a difference of opinion. I'm the sole voice representing the city on that, on that body. So I don't think you would, even if you have a very different opinion, you, I don't think you'd be able to. Share that with the uh, with with the, with the water district outside of your position as a citizen, outside of that.
Yeah, and we get to that at in another, other place.
But as a council representative, that representative should be representing the council, not themselves.
Co, absolutely, absolutely.
If they wanna represent their own opinion, they need to say that they're not speaking for the city of Gilroy.
Absolutely, that's.
So, Councilmember Tova, that's very well taken, um, but this particular point is really just talking about our city. Commissioners, the 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 people, the residents of Gilroy who apply for planning commission, parks and ref, right?
No, and I understand, I just, I just think my, I just think my question sort of brings a a bigger light to sort of.
So keep, keep that in mind as we go through the rest and make sure that that concern is in fact being addressed, but this one is just on the commissions.
In regards to this one and commissions. Um, the last line, council members uh, are encouraged to watch recorded commission meetings.
Right.
Would it be inappropriate for council members to watch them live online? And not, you know, comment or affect, I mean. Uh, regularly attend them, because it doesn't say you cannot attend them, it says, don't try to influence them or regularly attend them, right? Because then you give the.
Right, it means don't be there frequently.
Or give the, give the appearance of trying to influence them, right? Would it be inappropriate to attend them online?
So you're assuming that the meeting is virtual?
If there are virtual, you know, if it's being broadcast live or however hybrid we go.
Jimmy or Andy, do you want to comment on that? Because to me, if you're attending virtually, you're still attending, but.
I I I believe if the meeting is is a hundred percent virtual, then attending online is the same thing, because, you know. The commissioners look at the screen and there's only eight people and two of them are council members or something, that, that I think would be seen as as attendance.
As pressure.
Yeah.
But it doesn't say don't attend, right? It just says don't attend regularly.
These are norms and they're shoulds and these are not strict, hard and fast rules.
Well, I'm saying, in the, in the text of it, it doesn't say do not attend, it says do not regularly attend. And it says, do not influence.
Right, because I think, I think some of our commissions would appreciate a council member attending one or two times a year. It looks like you care, like you're interested. And to the person who's maybe attending all of the commission meetings, that person, that council member might be thinking, I'm showing that I care. But it's, it doesn't, it's the other side, yeah. It's not, not saying that there's ill intent, it's just, right, that it can be and that it it shouldn't be the case, because we do appoint our commissioners. And their voices should be independent and they shouldn't feel like somebody's watching all the time. You know, it's fine to show interest and be there occasionally, you know. I know I myself was trying, as soon as we got out of being virtual, I was trying to get around all the commissions in person, because I know other mayors have done that. They, like our commissions present to us, the mayor gives a presentation to the commission, but I had, I did it once and then here we go back. Right, so, anyway, uh, if someone has a better suggested wording, that's fine, but this has gone through myself and uh, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, La Romano. Okay, Councilmember Bracco is a thumbs up. Two, three, four, five, six, okay, so that one's holds. All right, if any council member chooses to speak, this is another one that is a change, so I'm gonna read it. If any council member chooses to speak before or to submit written comment to another elected body or board of elected officials. On any item for which they are not a council-appointed representative. This gets to what you're asking, Councilmember Tova. Or for which they are not speaking from an official position of the council. Such council members shall state that they are communicating as an individual constituent. And shall not reference Gilroy City Council or City Council member in any written or verbal communications. So it's like Councilmember La Romano was saying, it's fine if you, if you want to comment as the constituent that you were before you got elected. That's okay, but as an elected official, no. Is what this is saying.
Is there a reason it it doesn't include mayor? It just says council member, because I think too.
No, it means mayor, no, I I am a council member. I mean, I am the mayor, but I am also a council member.
Okay.
This is a seven-member council, just like uh. Commenter asked earlier.
So I, I, I think this one um. Borders on, it's like a slippery slope here in terms of our, our rights to free speech. Because I feel like our our titles as council members are are given to us by the bodies that elect us, not just the body that we sit on, if that makes sense. Um, and so I feel like. I go to a county supervisor's meeting and I identify myself as a a city council member. I'm not there as a representative of the Gilroy City Council, right, but I am there as a city council member. And representing the the views of the people who who voted for me, right, who elected me. And so I think that this one, this one I think we have to be very careful with so that we're not impeding on our, on our rights as. Um, as as elected persons and as individual persons to our, to our free speech.
I I would, I would respond to that respectfully, that I think that in that circumstance. I think it's exactly that representation that is confusing to people, because the the commissioner. Is, is, is supposed to be representing the will of the Gilroy voters and the Gilroy residents, period, whether the voters are not. Uh, and I think having a second person show up and identify themselves as a council. And I think having a second person show up and identify themselves as a council member. Implies that they're also speaking for, you know, one segment of the community or, or other residents. So I, I think it's, again, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that the commission representative is speaking from the position of this council. We trust those representatives to speak for the council. And I think the free speech rights are still very much preserved through being able to, to speak your, your piece as a, as a member of the. As a member of the, of the community at large. But I think having two, two representatives from the council and identifying yourselves as a member of the council, I think risks confusing that, that representation.
Yes, yes.
I, I, I agree with Peter. It, it would be confusing because say we had a vote. And the, the one, the three people on the losing end of that vote now go to the water district. And stand up and I'm a so-and-so from Gilroy City Council and we don't, you know, I, I don't agree with this. It, it confuses the, the board that they're talking to, that they're speaking for the seven, when they're really not.
Yes, and we, we have had that, that, that has happened and that's what we're trying to discuss here. And help us all to be able to say what it is you want to say, to, to, to identify how it is you can say what it is you want to say. Without going against, against what was a council vote, right? We had that, a, a good example of that was with VTA, right, in the housing, where this council voted that we were going to ask for a postpone. I'm the council representative, I'm there, I'm there to speak on behalf of the city of Gilroy that just voted to ask for this to be postponed. And there were two others who identified themselves as Gilroy City Council members saying the opposite. And so that's what.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Clarify, because it says other, another elected body or an elected body, right? Which contains a representative of our council, right? Like some elected bodies have Gilroy representatives, some don't. Like the County Board of Supervisors, right? And we saw that there too, when people spoke and identified themselves regarding the redistricting issue. Not as members of our city council, nor did they say, I'm not here as that person, I'm here as an individual constituent. So I can support us, I can support the language about us identifying ourselves as individual constituents. But are we going to, is that only in cases where there's a body that we have an official representative to? Or for both?
Yeah.
I would say for both.
You're saying for both? Yeah, I, I think what this is trying to say is for, I'm trying to remember how, because three of us were in, in here and I'm trying to remember where some of the wording came from. I, to me, it should be for both. I, I had asked Andy, and maybe this is the time, Andy, for you to discuss, I'd asked Andy to help us to, to, to say, to speak to. How, how you, what you could do before you got elected and how it changed once you got elected, you know, and so when you need to.
Right, I think the normal practice on this kind of paragraph is that it would apply to both boards that. Where there is an official city representative and also other boards where there is not an official city representative. Because the person is not speaking on behalf of the city of Gilroy or the council. And normally what someone does when they address them, they might, you know, they might get called as council member so-and-so because the boards know who you are. And typically a rep, a person will then say, I'm speaking, I want to make clear I'm not speaking on behalf of the, of the city, I'm speaking as an individual. And that's typically, you know, you've all heard these, that's typically the way they go. And the rationale for that is that you're not speaking as a council member, even though you are an elected person. It is like before you were an elected person. That's the distinction you're trying to get, which is a little bit different perhaps.
It is, because what you're saying, Andy, that's where the confusion is, is you're saying, you're speaking as an individual. But to some, that, that, they're addressing that by saying, I am speaking on behalf of myself as an individual council member. Which is different than I, as a citizen, I'm a citizen.
And I think that is what this is trying to avoid.
Exactly.
Somebody should say, I am speaking as an individual constituent, I'm not speaking as a council member.
Right, I'm speaking as a parent, I'm speaking as a resident, I'm speaking as a this, I'm not speaking as a council member.
Typically, and they introduce you as a council member, but typically people will say, although I'm a council member, I'm speaking as an individual, not as a member of the council.
Right, right.
And that's, that's what the norm, I think, is designed for anyway, and that, that's the normal approach to avoid confusion among elected boards.
I could support that, but the second piece with the additional language in blue. Where it says shall not reference Gilroy City Council or City Council member in any written or verbal communications. I, I think that's going too far. I think it does impinge on our, on our free speech and also on our right to, to cite. That our, our constituents did elect us and that we are city council members elected in, in the city. Although we do state, right, we are, we are there speaking as individuals, not as representatives of the council or as council members. Mayor?
Yes.
I like it as is because, yes, we are elected. But we have no way of knowing how many of our constituents actually feel a certain way, if they are backing why we are there. In order for us to say we are here representing the city council. We would have to know that the majority of the constituents believe like what we're saying and none of us know that.
I agree.
I really feel that when we go to any commission or committee or board of supervisors. And we are not there in an official capacity representing the city council, we need to say, I am, I am Carol Marks, I mean, as a citizen.
Yes, that, that's what I'm trying to get at here. Maybe Andy, you need to help me a little more. Because I, I don't hear Councilmember Arminder suggesting that she be able to say she's representing the city council. I hear her saying that she would like to be able to use her city council title in her written and verbal communications with other agencies. Even though she is well aware that she is saying something against the position of maybe the council majority. Or something that is, is not the appointed representative and therefore it's confusing and all those sorts of things.
Or an agenda item that we haven't discussed at all.
Whatever, right, so I, I hear you and I, it's a point well taken. And I, I am trying to ask for help in explaining that. We shouldn't be using our council member title with other elected boards in these things. I, you're feeling differently, I hear that, you're feeling differently. I am saying that we should not be using council member titles outside of our, of being the representative that this council appointed. Or outside of a position that this council has taken. That is something, those kinds of things are what you could do as an individual constituent, you can still say it. And people, like Andy said, will know that you're a council member, but you shouldn't be submitting that comment or doing that speech. By announcing and introducing yourself as a council member, it should be as a constituent. I know you disagree with that, that's what this says. Andy, do you have anything better to add or more to add?
No, other than if you wanted to, to add, not reference Gilroy City Council as a council, except as identification. As I said, people often say, I am a councilor, but I'm not speaking as one, so you know, that's, you don't want to get in trouble for saying that. It's kind of like with the FPPC somehow, you identify yourself.
It's for identification purposes, not.
I know, but then that's not going to change the, what we, what has happened last year where we have individual council members saying, I am speaking on behalf of my individual council member position.
But that's not, no, that is, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying you would only introduce yourself as a council member for identification. Not to say I'm speaking on behalf of my office or my council membership.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm trying to say.
So is that distinction clear, Rebecca? I just want to make sure, because that's, to me, that's a very mild difference.
Well, you may have different positions.
I, I know, and okay.
Mayor? If I may, no, and I, I'm, I'm in agreement with this, but going back to my initial question, and I, you said, this kind of covers that. In a way it does, but again, I'm, I'm in agreement with this one here, this is, we're focusing on the commissions here.
No, this one's not commissions.
No, 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 excuse me, that's, yeah, yeah, right. But going back to the concern I had regarding, and again, I'm trying to see, it didn't, doesn't fit in here. And correct me if I'm wrong, if it's a larger discussion we can have, that. The issue that I've, I've been having, I thought maybe it was one of the norms, but it may not be a norm, is those committees that appoint council members to represent council. Where we don't have a say, but the committees have a say in who they want to represent city council. And I, you know, I brought this up before, I just think it's unfair that these committees may want a council member who's best aligned with their views and may not represent.
Oh.
Follow what I'm saying?
You're referring to like.
Downtown.
Exactly, the GDVA saying that they want a certain council member.
Want so-and-so, so-and-so, and for, for me, it's like, well, then when does, you know, how is that fair to everybody else? Even though we have great representation from our council. But to have them dictate who they want, for me, I think it's unfair because I might not have the same views as, say, the.
No, I hear you, so where should that go is what I'm asking.
I don't, if I may, I don't think that's a matter of the norms, that's a matter where the committee does that. In order to avoid becoming a brown act organization itself, that's the ration, that's why they do that. We made that change four or five years ago. But I think all of those have to be essentially ratified by the council. I mean, you have, the council has to agree that that's appropriate, even though the committee has made the appointment.
Right, yeah, but you.
So I think that's the way it comes.
Right, no, and I, I think, we need to have that discussion because again, to say, well, I can't be on this commission because they don't want me, they want so-and-so. And it just, I think it's unfair to all of us, even though we do have the correlation. We should not let them dictate who represents.
They don't, because it comes back to the council, we have to vote to put somebody into a, a subcommittee.
Yeah, but what he said, no, what he's saying is we have some that try to decide which council members are going to be.
We can't really do anything about that.
Why can't we?
Well, you can say yes or no when it comes up to for.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So was there a proposed change in wording or are we voting on this worded as it is?
As is.
I'd like to add the language that Andy said.
The language I suggested was in blue where it says shall not reference Gilroy City Council or City Council member. I would add after that, except for identification.
And I could agree with that if we add that.
Except for personal identification? I mean, because Andy, I, I just don't see how that's going to, if you're identifying yourself as a council member, then you're speaking as a council member.
No, you're not, you're saying, you're saying I'm a councilor, but I'm not speaking as a council member. That's what you have to say, that's, that's what people do say typically.
Okay. Okay, I understand what, I understand what's being asked and I'll see what, how the, how the wording, city council, except for identification. So I guess what that means is when you're saying it's okay for identification, it means you're not saying I am speaking on behalf of my city council position.
That's correct, that's what I, that's what I understand.
You're just saying, I'm Marie Blenkley, I'm the mayor of Gilroy, but I am here speaking as a constituent. That's the way to do it, okay? So that's got to be clear in the, in your written correspondence and speaking correspondence then too. Okay, so thumbs up, I need to see thumbs. Okay, it looks like six.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Under staff relations, no real changes until you get to one, two, three, four, five, and I am going to suggest numbering these. The fifth one, council's focus is policy, the staff focuses on professional execution and technical knowledge. Council members shall not provide their own individual technical comments to city partners or other agencies. Like VTA, LAFCO, High Speed Rail, et cetera, unless speaking solely as an individual constituent and not as a council member. Is there, okay, no discussion, just thumbs up? So I see six on that one, okay, Councilmember Hilton, are you? Oh, well, this has been out since last week, yeah, okay. Okay, then the blue, that was Andy suggesting that come out, everybody okay with that? Deleting that one? Okay, council members, including the mayor, and the only reason I put including the mayor here was because some, so many people think that there's a staff person that I have and I don't. And so I wanted to make sure it's clear, council members, including the mayor, because I am a council member too, do not have their own city staff. Council members wishing to solicit their own volunteers should represent to the public. That all oversight and decisions regarding such volunteer positions are at the sole discretion of that council member alone. Any discussion there?
Volunteers in what, in like, in what capacity, like?
Well, again, this isn't to do with the city, it's, if an individual.
Outside events.
If an individual council member does whatever they do on their own time. This is just saying, make sure it's clear that the position is, that people understand the over, there's, there's no connection to the city.
Got it. So outside activities or events?
Outside, anything, if you're using your own volunteers, none of us has staff. We don't have staff, we don't get to use staff, we don't get to go to staff and ask them to do stuff for us. We don't, we don't get to do that, so whatever you have your own volunteers do, they just need to know that you're, there's no, there's no HR involved. There's no anything.
Oh, I, I saw this as like an external, right? Like if you're asking city staff to volunteer for something, you're doing it as an individual. But this is saying, if you have your own volunteers, right, to help you with your activities. They should, it should be made clear that it has nothing to do with.
With the city, so that any, if anything happens, it's not on the city, there's the city, yeah.
Got it.
Yes.
I have a question for Andy. Andy, on, on that. What, what if someone's volunteering for a council member or whatever? And then they say they, they were touched inappropriately or something? Would they be able to sue the city? Because we're allowing it. We're just telling council members, make sure they know they're not working for the city of Gilroy.
Right, well, actually, in, in the one example of this with the interns, the council member has. We and the council member have agreed that the, the interns will sign releases of the city.
Oh, okay.
And, and releasing those kinds of things, and so, and they've agreed to do that. Yes, because potentially you're correct, that's, I mean, potentially anybody who does work for a council member or for the city. May decide that if something goes wrong, it's the city's fault. So we, we have tried to deal with that.
Should we have a disclaimer on our council page, on our website, maybe, so it's clear?
I, we, we can look at that, I don't think it's necessary.
To say what, that we're not responsible for the conduct of another council member? What do you mean?
That we don't have staff and interns.
Oh, yeah, we don't have staff, that's, and that's why it's so confusing, is because then people think we do. And we don't, especially when the plural is used, you know, that like our, our office is more than just us, when it's not, our office is just us.
We, we didn't believe that was necessary in this case.
Okay, so thumbs, I need to see thumbs on this, I see one, okay, two, three, four, I see five on this one, okay? Staff may not be used by individual council members for causes to further their own individual position apart from that of council decision. This is getting to asking staff directly for things to, on, on something you're doing on your own. Similarly, council members should not contact staff directly to attend or otherwise engage in events or causes. Of individual council members without the express permission of the city administrator. Discussion there?
Just, just a question. Or Andy or Jimmy, so for example, I just want, clarification, so let's just say. I come across something I think would be beneficial for the city, workforce development, right? And I know that we have staff members who worked on that specifically. And it's not a benefit for me, it's a benefit for the entire city, is this saying that I can't do that?
Thank you, Mr. Tovar. What you speak of is, I think, different than this and council members are a lot of times our greatest connection to programs, grants. I get stuff from all of you all the time, it's great. What we're talking about here, and I'll be very specific, is that I think almost all of you have had town hall meetings. And that's your right to do, I think that's great, but at times staff has been invited and I've had to tell everybody just basically no. Because if we pick Mr. Tovar's event and we don't pick Mr. Bracco's event and we don't control the agenda. So we kind of are doing our best to stay out of political, you know, meetings and things like that. But if there is an occasion where you have a meeting with the county and you would love to have the Public Works Director go with you. Then you should get ahold of me and say, hey, I'm meeting with, about these roads, we really need some staff help here. That gives me an opportunity and then that way if you don't agree, you could, it's between you and I and it doesn't put staff in a bad position.
Perfect, okay.
I, thank you for the explanation. I do have issue, or take issue rather, with the first sentence because. It says to, to further their own individual position apart from that of council decisions. So in, in the town hall that I co-sponsored recently, there was no. It wasn't that I was furthering my own individual position, nor was it a position apart from that of council decisions. it wasn't that I was furthering my own individual position, nor was it a position apart from that of council decisions. I agree with the language that we should always go through, through Jimmy or through our city administrator. I think that's fine. But I just think we can clear, it just seems kind of like there's animus there, like um, or, or some kind of um, political like we're insinuating that there's like a political agenda uh, for everything, we're using that language.
So, so may I make a suggestion on that language then? If, if we could just simply remove uh, the uh, item where it says to further an individu-, a position apart from that of council decisions. So it would read, staff may not be used by individual council members for causes.
For their individual causes?
Uh, no, for causes apart from those of council decisions. So it removes the individual positions. So now it's just generally causes. And, and unless we've taken a position, all staff will not be working on it.
That sounds agreeable to me. Thank you for that.
So staff may not be used by council, by individual council members for causes apart from that of council decisions.
Uh, from, yeah, from those of council decisions.
Okay, so let's, um, since we're here to all, you know, we, we want to get something out of this that benefits all of us. So if it's okay with you, can we use the specific example of the town hall that you had?
Yeah.
Okay, because that was a coun-, council did decide that we were going to, and we haven't had it yet, right, on fentanyl awareness, right? Rochelle's working on that, she's doing a great job, Morgan Hill had theirs. And it's coming up, and she's doing it with school district and stuff. But this particular, that particular case was, you went, council's gonna, council asked staff, asked city to do that. You were doing something a, a, in addition, in addition. It was, it was apart from that. And it was with a flyer that had your personal council member logo on it.
Yeah.
So that was a case where inviting the police chief and the fire chief was something that we're trying to get at here. As something you don't do, because, without Jimmy expressly approving that, because that's using city staff for a individual council member's thing, your logo, your thing, because it wasn't even just your logo, it was other groups that you're associated with. Right?
Community groups, so, yeah.
So that's, anyway, that's what this was, is, not, not that this is only for that specific thing, I'm just using it as an example.
Mm-hmm. No, and, and that's why I said I'm, I'm totally agreeable to the rest of the language. It just, the first part, the original language just felt like it was as if there was a political agenda there, not a community, you know.
Oh, no.
A focused agenda.
So even though it's, even though we're saying then, staff may not be used by individual for causes apart from that of council decisions, Jimmy, does that cover it for you?
And, and actually, I point out, this isn't anything new. Uh, this is actually in the charter, uh, that staff can only take direction from me, so um, I just, the town hall thing is a new thing. We all started doing it during the uh, the pandemic as a way to connect. And so um, I just want, you know, from my point of view, I want council to know, we're not saying no because we don't want to participate. It's just, once you say yes to one, you then really complicate things, and it's easier for us just to, to have those that are sponsored by the city, that the city controls the agenda, controls the participants and such, so I believe this achieves that language that we're looking for, which is just kind of a clarification of where we're coming from.
So maybe we don't need that first sentence at all. I mean, it just have it say, council members should not contact staff directly to attend or otherwise engage in events or causes of individual council members without the express permission of the city administrator. Is that better?
That's fine.
Okay, that's fine. So that, I think that's even more clear. So just take that out completely. Okay, so I need to see thumbs on that one. And I see again, six, okay? All right, council communications, um, I don't think anything here is a significant change. If someone wants to bring something up, this would be the time.
Mayor, can I bring one up?
Yeah.
And, and I know I'm largely to blame on this one, and I'll take, I'll take ownership of it, um, because I want to give everybody a proclamation, you know. I want to acknowledge everybody. If there's something that happens good in the city, I want a proclamation. So I take ownership and blame of this one. Um, but I see it as a good thing, so, you know, again, where it says requests for proclamation should be addressed to the mayor and the city clerk. Is that saying that, let's just say, I want to acknowledge uh, Peter for ten years of whatever, whatever, whatever.
Just send your email to both.
Yeah, no, 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 but I'm getting to the, to the, of the process of it, where um, is it going to be where, uh, for example, any proclamations um, should be addressed to the mayor and city clerk, that will be, it will be moved forward unless an issue arises. See, follow what I'm saying? Is where, who has the ultimate say in yea or nay? That's the question I have. Because again, you know, I mean, you guys have done, you, you've been excellent when it comes to acknowledgements and stuff. I just don't want it to get to the point where, well, I don't know, I don't know if I can, I have to get approval from so and so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's my only concern.
Right. I, I, I think most of the time, this is not a problem at all. It's just since the mayor is the one who signs all the proclamations.
And attends.
I was getting surprised by the number of things that I wasn't even aware of that was sitting there for me to sign. I'm like, wait, what am I signing?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so proclamations are prepared by the city clerk. And so you have to, he, he is who you have to go through and get all the information, and oftentimes people ask for them, and they don't realize how much information they have to provide in order for him to do it. But I am asking to be copied on that too, and unless there's a problem, if there's a problem, then I'll contact you or whoever it is, but that's not usually the case. It's just that I want to be aware.
Right, no, no, and I respectfully, I respect that, and again, and I, that's why I take ownership, because previous mayor would just, they'd be throwing proclamations out everywhere, and just, we'd just throw it to the city clerk without any, you know. So that's sort of, I learned the, the wrong way, and this.
Wasn't wrong, I'm sure every mayor, you know, we all are individuals too, and so we have our way.
I just wanted it, I just wanted it to the point where, you know, again, it wasn't where, I can't bring a proclamation, proclamation of thinking that it may get denied for some reason. It may, if it's not the right, you know, but.
Yeah, doubtful, but yeah, you just let, right, both know and then, yeah.
I'm good with that.
And council member Tovar, I, I wait patiently for my proclamation.
So we don't have a, a process or parameters for the proclamations? They could be all approved or all denied?
No, I'm sure, I, I imagine we do have some. We've just never had anything come up that's been a reason to, to, that, that I know of. I mean, I haven't been the mayor very long. So just for me, there have been, the only thing, the only issue I came across last year was the number of times that I didn't know that something was coming, and I just didn't understand how this was happening when I'm the one who has to sign them. Yeah, that's all. And in some cases, I, I, it left me wondering, am I supposed to present this? You know, because it says by Marie Blankley, and I just, I didn't know how this came to be. So that's all.
Yeah.
But I'm sure that, that a time may come where if that's an issue, then this council's going to have to deal with what that should be.
So we don't, we don't, uh, just confirming, we don't have a policy around proclamations?
I don't know, do we? Do we?
No, council members, we do not. It's been a very kind of loosey-goosey. And with the previous mayor, we would literally just give him a stack and he would sign them, and we never had any issues.
I read everything.
But, uh, this particular mayor reads everything, and so we've had it just go through the city clerk now. Um, but the other thing you can do too is if you don't agree with the mayor, you could actually do it as a future council initiated item. And uh, you know, go with it that way, but, but today, we've not ever had any that we were like, uh, we can't do that.
Okay, thank you. And a lot of them, I mean, I suppose it could become an issue if there's so many, and they're all being asked to be presented at council meetings, then I'm going to get into how long is this, yeah, kind of thing going to be, but a lot of them are not even at council meetings. They just want the proclamation for something else, right? Like what the chamber's doing.
Yeah.
For all their Spica Life awards. They present them at their event.
Thumbs up, thumbs up.
Okay, right. So this is, I'm asking for thumbs up for the rest of this page.
Oh.
Okay, the rest of this page, because this is the only, this is the only item that, uh, I don't think anything else is any real change. Okay, um, uh, council member Hilton, are you participating? Okay. All right, so next page, and really the last, because the one after that is nothing. Um, these are, I'm telling you, I, I asked council member La Romenos, Vice Mayor La Romenos and Andy to look at these, and I, sometimes I feel like you guys looked at them for the first time, some of these changes. Oh, this one is a significant change. So the, the, I guess it's the second one, when a council member endorses, do you see that one? When a council member endorses a person, position, or issue, separate from a position endorsed by a vote of the city council. It's a personal endorsement, not a city endorsement. So any reference to Gilroy City Council in associate, in association with the individual should be changed to Gilroy City Council member. You could certainly endorse as a Gilroy City Council member, but just make sure that you're not saying Gilroy City Council.
Oh, got it.
Okay? Everybody, okay, good, good, good. I see majority in that, okay? Down to the blue bullet. No council, this is, this first sentence is no change. No council member shall communicate in a manner that appears to come from the city or city staff or city council or in a manner that suggests a position associated with the city or with knowledge of the city council. That's pretty much the same as what was there before.
I was going to say, how is that different?
It's, I don't know.
Previous one.
But if we're okay with, everybody okay with it? Okay. Council member elected, oh, this one is, is new. Council member elected offices are nonpartisan. Okay, so no council member shall refer to their city council elected position as being associated with the political party. Is that cleared, everyone?
Can you uh, give us an example? You don't have to say names, I'm just saying, an example, because our, our seats when we vote and on the ballot, it clearly, clearly states that these are not partisan. It doesn't ask for your party.
Right, we're nonparti-, so you're not, you're not a, you're not a Democratic Party city council member or Republican Party city council member. You can be a Democratic individual.
That's what I'm saying.
Republican Party individual, or an independent party individual.
I understand that.
But not city council member.
But it, so, that is, that's on the ballot, right? There's no need to designate yourself. You're not being uh, nominated by a party. So how is it, I mean, I don't understand the, the relev- Yeah, the relevance of this or.
Because we had it come up last year. And we had constituents very upset.
We had a, a limited number of constituents that were upset, I think, and if I'm identifying myself, if I'm sending out my newsletter or making my social media comment and um, saying it as, as a Democrat or for my political party, why is that, then why is it a, a council norm? What I'm saying is, I don't think it needs to be stated. It doesn't make any sense.
Do you want to help with that, Andy?
I'm not sure we're talking really about the same thing. Obviously, members of the council can be members of a political party, of course, as, as anyone can. Uh, I think that the question is somehow, if, if communications are sent out that imply that this is a partisan seat, even though we know they're nonpartisan.
Exactly.
That, I think that's the issue that, that this is trying to get to, and I'm not sure.
What I'm saying is, is it doesn't, it's, I don't think it's an issue.
Well.
Then that's my, my opinion, yeah, is I don't think it's an issue.
All right.
Right, it was, it was an issue last year. It wa-, there was something put out that absolutely referred to the city council elected office as being a Democratic Party.
I think if our constituents misread something or misinterpret something, I don't think it has to become a council norm. Especially if it's from our individual newsletters, you know, which are very, very political, very opinionated, as they should be.
Right, but, but Gilroy shouldn't, but it shouldn't, your city council position is nonpartisan.
That's correct.
So those kinds of, of, I think politi-, I think all political parties are nasty. I don't like any of them. And I don't think there's any place for any of that on this city council, because we are nonpartisan. And when people try to bring that in, it just creates all this unnecessary talk, because we are nonpartisan. These positions are not partisan. So this norm is simply trying to help us all understand what are best practices. And best practices would mean that you don't refer to your, your elected position. If you want to say who you're supporting in, in the partisan offices, go right ahead. But when you're referring to your own seat here, it's, it's nonpartisan. That's all this is saying, and if there's a, it, that's all this is saying.
Mayor, let me give an example, example for myself, and I think this is sort of, I mean, I can agree with it, so. I'm a Democrat, obviously. Um, but whenever I talk, I talk as nonpartisan city council members, and I represent everybody. So that would be where if I'm having a discussion, saying, yeah, I'm a Democrat, but as a council member, I represent the entire city. And I don't say only the Democrats, basically. Is that, I mean, that's what we're talking about here, right? I mean, that's.
Well, you're not going to control the public. I mean, the public, I know in, in election time, they all want to know what political party you belong, you know, that's up to them.
Right.
This is just acknowledging that these positions are nonpartisan.
Right, meaning that it, it doesn't take away from my, my Democrat beliefs, it just.
No, of course not, right.
That's why I don't understand it being uh, an issue or something that we have to restate. Because it's not printed officially anywhere on a ballot or on our city council page, um, our website, in our titles. It's, it's, it doesn't exist anywhere. I think if the issue uh, was misinterpreted or misread by members of our, of our public, then that's something that they need to look at again. Um, but if I'm attending a, a party event as part of my political party, well then, and then I identify myself as a council member and a Democrat, that's a hundred percent within my rights. And if it's publicly broadcasted and my constituents hear it and they don't like it, it still doesn't make it an issue for the council. It still doesn't need to be a council norm. That's not what this is getting at.
I, I think the council norm is important in the sense that it's not just for us, but it's also a reminder to the public to avoid exactly what you said. That they should not, you know, re- read more into something than, than, than what's actually there. So it's more a reminder, I think, to the larger public as a whole, hey, you might have your beliefs. I, I know I've got my belief, you know, but these roles, these seats that we sit in are nonpartisan officially. So I think it's just important for everybody throughout the community to know that. No one leaves, you know, no one sacrifices or doesn't have their own beliefs. But just these roles, these seats are occupied as nonpartisan seats.
Well, then can we flesh out the language here? Can we elaborate more, where we're saying no council member shall refer to their city council elected position as being associated with the political party while on the dais or uh, you know, while representing their, um, their seat at an official, as an official representative? Because this language is too ambiguous.
No, no, I think it's actually just the opposite. I think this is very clear, is that no council member shall refer to their city council elected position, these seats here, as being associated with a political party.
And it just says shall refer to it. It doesn't say in what capacity or where.
No, just they, they shouldn't, you shouldn't be doing it anywhere as suggesting that this is a seat that is a partisan seat.
Right, you, you yourself are Democrat.
It's not a partisan seat, but like I said, if I'm at my party event.
But you, you can.
At a public event either that's a part of my party, then.
You, but you can still say, you know, I'm, I'm Rebecca, I'm a proud member of X party, and, you know, I serve on the Gilroy City Council. That, I think that's fine, but I think anything that suggests that these seats are in any way partisan, um, is just, is just inaccurate. So this is just referencing, again, the seats we occupy, nonpartisan.
I think, I think I'll agree to disagree.
Okay, so let's do a thumbs up then on this one. So what do we have? One, two, three, five. Okay, thank you. Okay, um, the, the, the next one there, repeater series viola, that's been there uh, before, and when we're all done with this, if someone wants to talk about that, you can, but otherwise, the remedy is just censure. Okay, council travel, this is just trying to make things clear, travel or training. So if anybody has a comment or wants to address that, this is the time. But this is so that we don't have um, any question of how the council is asked for those who want to attend training things that are not, that are outside the norm, but they want it to be on the taxpayers' dime. So this is to address what that process is. Are there any uh, comments on that? Okay, then I'm looking for, right, thumbs up. So I see one, two, three, four, five. Okay, so that passes. And there are no other changes. So two notes that, that I had, Councilor La Romenos, did you have some others that you wanted to discuss on here or no?
No.
Okay, so I wanted, I had here on my notes.
Sorry. Can I actually talk about one on here?
Yeah.
Um, it's the second to the last bullet.
Second to the last one?
Yeah, it says if a council member must cancel a hotel reservation or the lights, the council member will pay all costs associated for. So for example, if, you know, I think I had something, a family emergency come up last time, but I was able to attend after all. So even if it's something that's out of control, for example, family emergency, birth of a baby, whatever it may be, that council member would still have to pay for all costs associated.
uh, that council member would still have to pay for all costs associated, is that, that's what it's saying, right? Is there any exceptions, like I said, I mean?
I'm gonna let Jimmy answer that one, because.
We would hold you under the same standard as we do the citywide travel policy, and we do make exceptions for extraordinary conditions, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so yeah, I was just gonna add the, at the end, uh, time limits, but we got to that at the very first thing, so I wanted to know if there was any, uh, council input on time limits, we've already addressed that, um, the last thing, and I, I didn't, I am not suggesting this be in the norms or even addressed, but since we are here, and again, I want this to be as productive and as thorough as possible, does anybody, I just want to ask about attendance, we have attendance, uh, rules, I guess, or standards that we impose on our commissions, and I think as council members, we need to set the example, right, for the same thing that we impose on our commissions, we, the charter certainly does not say anything about council member attendance, there's, you, you could miss ninety percent of the meetings, and nothing can get you off this council but the voters. The charter does not limit, or, right, Andy, we, we looked at that, so there is nothing in the charter that forces you to attend. So the voters put council members on, only the voters can take council members off, based on what they say, but as a, as a matter of standard, does, does anybody feel the need to talk about that, or is everybody okay with council member attendance? Because it can be hard.
I'm good.
I'm okay.
Okay. Good, everybody's good, okay, because I know that there could.
Especially like in this time of pandemic, right, and quarantining and, you know, separating yourself, like luckily we have less, um, the ability to go on, on Zoom now, or the mandate to go on Zoom, right, and then hopefully in the future, the ability to hybrid, but, but there's, it's just such a different time now, like I, I think we have to be, uh, flexible with that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I, I, I think I'm talking about things where there's maybe actually a work conflict.
No.
And so it's, yeah.
I think still, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's just, I mean, uh, the public can always see council member attendance by just going to the minutes, you go to the minutes and you can see who's, who's attending and when, and it's all there, um, I just wanted to know if, if, if we wanted to abide by the same thing that we put on our commissions, yes?
So maybe at minimum, mayor, we could have, uh, uh, just a short norm that simply states that if a council member is unable to attend a meeting, that they will give notice in advance to the mayor or to the city manager. And then the city, uh, the, the, either the city manager or the mayor can announce that, so the public is, is aware, because I know sometimes things come up with me with work or others, whatever, so.
No, it's just the polite thing to do.
Yeah.
No, no, I like, I like that.
Imagine that.
I like that recommendation, because again, yeah, I mean, I'm okay with that, I mean, if someone's gonna miss and they let us know ahead of time, just to let the, you know, the community know that, you know, Peter's not here due to whatever, I mean, as much as he wants to share, that way they know that he just didn't blow us off, he's, something came up.
Okay, we'll notify the mayor or the city administrator, how many days in advance, by when?
I, I would just leave it, I would just leave it in advance.
Okay, because I am not talking about emergencies.
No, 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 because, because, yeah, because I've, I've had things come up at the very last minute sometimes work, so.
And I am not talking about those kinds of things.
Just, just in advance, um.
As soon as reasonably practical.
As soon as reasonably practical, yeah, practicable, thank you.
Okay, all right, so I'll add that one then, is that a thumbs up for everybody? Reasonably practicable, one, two, three, okay, so I see five, okay. Okay. Uh, where does that leave us? Anybody have, oh, public comment, let's open the public hearing on the norms.
Let's take account of how many people are giving a public comment and.
See, I love in person, because I can see, you can see there's no more than ten, so yay.
I received one speaker card, and it's from Ron Kirkish.
Okay. Ron Kirkish? Oh, so that was from before.
Okay, because I hear he wrote council norms, which is three point two.
Okay, so are there any, is there anybody who wants to speak on council norms, okay, it looks like we have one.
Okay.
You mean Ron doesn't want to speak?
You can fill it out later, Rebecca, so that we don't have to wait, yeah, we know who you are.
Could you spell your name for us, please?
Like school with ease, hi, I'm Rebecca Steele. And I am a member of the Open Government Commission, but I'm not speaking for the commission, I just want to make that clear. Especially since you had all this.
Thank you. Yes, well done.
I do want to say, as a longtime commissioner, I've never, um, not wanted any of you to attend a meeting. And I know the mayor attended our January meeting.
Yes, I did, my first one.
And the, I don't think anybody was upset that you were there, and I really hope that you know that as a longtime commissioner, I think I have fifteen years in, that we encourage participation from the public and from the city council, that's why we're here. I'd also like to, um, address the serial meetings, and I know that was a previous agenda point, but I did a public information request about ser-, because I'm interested in the serial meetings under the Brown Act. And I'm trying to understand the mayor, um, going out to lunch with different council members in succession. And I would like to understand how that may be from you, Andy, is not a serial meeting. So maybe you can address that to me personally. I.
Because the subject matter isn't anywhere near the same on any one of those.
But how does the public know that, when they know that you're taking council members individually out to lunch in succession?
Is it okay for me to respond here?
Sure, I can also respond.
Because I'm not taking individual council members out to lunch, it is council members asking me for a monthly check-in. And so it could be lunch, it could be coffee, it could be a walk, it's something that all prior mayors have done too, the same way they do with the city administrator. When a council member asks to meet with me to, uh, check in, is what we call it, it's a monthly check-in, and not everybody wants that, but some do. And so for those who ask, I am not supposed to not agree to it, I have to make the time for it, and that's what I do.
Okay, well, from the public, knowing that it's happening, because you're going to public places with different council members, it doesn't always appear.
How is that different than the prior mayors, I'm not understanding why that's.
I don't really know about what the prior mayors have been doing, and I'm talking about what's going on right now.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, and I'm doing what, what council members ask me to do, I would be happy not to do that, if that is something that I should not, if I should not be checking in with council members who ask to check in with me.
No, I, I understand the concern, but yeah, I would not want that to stop, because I think the monthly check-ins we have helps me really grasp a lot of what's going on.
Right.
Unfortunately, I never had it with the previous mayor, because he never wanted to meet with me, but anyhow.
I know, it's the same, I know, you could go round and round on these.
But you're saying the mayor is asking you to meet with you, and you're saying that they're asking you, so now I'm really confused.
No, I didn't say that, I said that I've, I don't want it to stop, because I want to continue to meet with her, because I ask her to meet with me once a month.
Okay, well, that's not how I, that's not.
Right, and generally, generally speaking, when council members meet together, it's appropriate not to try to achieve a consensus or to ask one council member or relay how other council members are thinking, because that can be a system of trying to get a consensus, but assuming that's not going on, there's nothing improper.
Yeah, it's a council member asking to meet with me, and they're usually asking what, they want something to maybe come up on the agenda, they, what do I think about this? I mean, it has, one is nothing to do with the other council meetings, I mean, other lunches. And Councilmember Rocco, you were saying?
Well, I, I would rather our council members meet in public than behind closed doors where the public doesn't know what's going on.
Yeah.
And I think most people feel that way.
No, I know, prior council, they used to meet for breakfast every Saturday and stuff, yeah.
No, and I agree with that, and I'd also agree that I'd like if, when I asked the mayor to meet with me, that she would buy me lunch, but she never does, but anyhow.
Because you keep asking for a walk instead of lunch, you don't ask for coffee, and then three of you don't ask to meet at all.
Ask for breakfast.
Well, lastly, I would just ask that you all take into consideration that the public really would like to see transparency in our city government, and. I understand that a lot of people feel that that's not happening, and so I ask that you all look at yourself, how you respond, how you roll your eyes or not, when people ask you questions or you don't agree. Because people out here, and people watching on TV can see that. And they're, they're watching, so please follow your rules here, be polite. And be transparent, why do we have an open government commission and an ordinance if we're not following it? If we're trying to restrict public comment? I don't, it, it's so annoying to the public, myself, because I'm familiar with it, because I'm on that commission, knowing how it could be, and then to see restrictions going on. And people know where they're, where they're coming from and who they're directed at. We're, we're, we're all smart people, and.
Thank you, Rebecca, you're, yeah, the time, I'm sorry.
My time is, obviously.
I have to give the same amount of time to everybody.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any other comments?
There are no other public comments.
No other comments. Okay, council, does anyone else have anything they want to add to tonight? Okay, well, thank you, I certainly hope this has been helpful to all, we'll get the norms into, uh, one of our next packets. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.